I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a degree of justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted on the meeting room wall on the west side and is accessible to the public at any time during the course of this meeting. It is now my pleasure to introduce to you some young students who deserve the honor as being mayor of the day for their work with Keep Nebraska Beautiful and Beatrice Beautiful. It's called the Great American Cleanup, Elementary Cleanup, Your Cleanup Your Block Party. And these are the 2017 Mayor for the Day winners. They include from Cedar Elementary School, Bryson Engelmann. He's in the third grade. He picked up litter on six blocks along 10th and Court Street. Bryson found plastic bags, plastic bottles, straws, cardboard, metal, and paper. The next one is Lincoln Elementary School student Eli Duncan. Eli is in kindergarten. He picked up litter on 20 blocks between 13th Street and Elk Street to 13th and Arthur Street, 9th to Arthur Street, and 9th to Elk Street. Sounds like he's on a campaign mission. Eli found fast food containers, drink bottles, chip bags, and random litter. Next is Paddock Lane Elementary School student Emma Hillman. Emma is in second grade. She picked up litter in Astro Park, the church parking lot at 8th and Elk, and the block around the church. Emma found food wrappers, cigarettes, cans, and bottle caps. Next is Stoddard Elementary School student Maddie Nielsen, who is in the fifth grade. She picked up litter on the Country Club Lane area, in the Country Club Lane area, 13th Street, on the dirt road by the Country Club. Maddie found glass bottles, boxes, trash bags, and golf balls destroyed by mowers, and kept the good golf balls for her dad, I'm sure. And last is St. Paul's Lutheran School student Isabella Shaley. Isabella is in the third grade. She picked up litter in the alley in the 800 block between Court Street and Market Street. Isabella found plastic bags, lots of paper, cups, and paper. There were no entries from St. Joe's Catholic School. Keep Beatrice Beautiful thanks each of the elementary students who participated in the Great American Cleanup, Clean Your Block Party. We want to thank these students for their special part in keeping Beatrice, Gage County, and America clean and beautiful. The $50 cash prize and certificates are provided by Keep Beatrice Beautiful. Linda Grell is in attendance. She is director of Keep Beatrice Beautiful and does a really nice job for our community. Now, I have certificates for each of you, and I think I'll have each of you come up here. And if the parents or grandparents or whomever wants to take a picture of them sitting in the chair, we're going to have them do that. Why don't you come up as your name is called? The first one is Bryson Engelmann. Bryson?
Set the chair.
Yeah, tell him to smile.
If you want to hold that up. Okay, you guys watch how he does this.
Smile, guy. There you go.
Hey, the weight of the city just dropped on this kid's shoulders.
Put it down a little bit so you're not covering up your smile. There you go.
Thanks, Bryson.
You can use the gavel one time if you have.
The next one is Eli Duncan. Eli, come on up.
This guy doesn't have any problem smiling. Sit down. It's warmed up for you, buddy.
He's smiling. I think he just traded off the industrial park out there.
You want to hold this up? You can hold it up this way. Let's do it this way, maybe. There, that works better, doesn't it? Down a little bit. Good job, buddy.
Next one is Emma Hillman. Emma?
Come on up, Emma. Emma dressed up for us. There you go. Just put it down here so they can see your pretty face, okay?
Next is Maddie Nielsen. Maddie, come on up.
He wants to see it. No, I want it.
Thanks, Maddie.
And the last is Isabella Shaley. Isabella?
Smile because your dad's going to take a picture.
There you go.
Put it down just a little bit so they can see your face, okay? All right. Good. Thank you very much.
Isabella looked like she was about ready to balance the budget.
We also want to thank the parents and grandparents and whoever had any part in helping encourage and lead these youngsters to looking at cleaning our community and keeping America beautiful. Thank you very much. You're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the city council meeting. The agenda looks about like this, so it's up to you. Again, thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have three different proclamations. The first proclamation has to do with Tourism Week. Tourism Week is May 7th through the 13th of May. Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your hard work.
Didn't want to start again.
Thank you. There we go. Print's a little bigger. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas Nebraska and Gage County, including the city of Beatrice, is marked by an abundance of beautiful parks and fascinating historic landmarks, as well as a variety of outdoor and indoor recreational and cultural attractions and activities. These features, coupled with the hospitality of our area community and businesses, welcome travelers to experience life as we know and appreciate. And whereas tourism in Nebraska and Gage County, including the city of Beatrice, acknowledges tourism and business travel, not only provides rewarding educational opportunities for individuals, but also contributes to Nebraska's economic prosperity, making tourism the third largest revenue. And whereas tourism in Nebraska, including Gage County and the city of Beatrice, support existing companies and stimulates new business development. And whereas Nebraska and Gage County, including the city of Beatrice, acknowledges that ag tourism is a great resource for agricultural production, some of which include farmers' markets, farm-to-table designated restaurants, Nebraska-grown products, hunting, fishing, and furthermore does so by offering visitors another cultural and culinary link to the rural areas in Gage County. And whereas Nebraska and Gage County, including the city of Beatrice, acknowledges the countless benefits to travelers' health and wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, educational, happiness, productivity, and relationships. Now therefore, I stand worth, mayor of the city of Beatrice, to hereby proclaim May 7th through the 13th, 2017, as Nebraska, Gage County, and the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, Tourism Week, and urge the citizens of Gage County and Beatrice, Nebraska, to join me in this special observance, witness my hand and official seal of the city of Beatrice, first day of May 2017. And with us is Lisa Wiegand, Gage County Tourism Director.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Gage County Tourism and the whole county, we welcome everyone to come to Gage County. We know this is a really special year as we prepare for the eclipse, but there's so much more because this is Nebraska's 150th anniversary, and lots of things are happening here in our community. Beatrice is 160 years old. Blue Springs is 160 years old. Nebraska obviously is 150-year-old, 50-years-old, which we have six designated events that are official Nebraska 150 events. Here in your town, you have Sunrise Bakery, one of our favorite places to stop for a good donut, celebrating their 100th anniversary, and also Grandma's Fruit Cakes is 100-years-old, the recipe is. So, we salute, thank you so much for your support, and we look forward to the rest of the year, so.
Thank you, Lisa.
You bet.
All right, the next proclamation has to do with drinking water, and it's Drinking Water Week. Whereas water is the most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity and public safety, are all in some way related to access to safe water. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our sources' water from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore, I stand worth, mayor of the city of Beatrice, to hereby proclaim May 7th through the 13th, 2017, as Drinking Water Week. Witness my hand and official seal, city of Beatrice, this first day of May 2017. And with us is Water Superintendent Steve Kelly.
Well, I think majority of the community, they turn on the faucet. They don't think much about what's coming out of there because we're very fortunate. We have good water supply, and we have not had a violation in 25-plus years of any sort of the water we drink here in Beatrice. We have, like I said, we have an excellent supply of water. We have also adequate supply of water, which definitely helps us. But some of my employees sometime don't think we get much recognition. But I tell them, well, that's because when they turn the faucet on, they have no worries. That means we're doing our job. And because of that, everybody does take water pretty much for granted, but that's just the way life is. But I'd like to thank the administration, the Board of Public Works Board, the city council, and the mayor for their support and letting us run our department in a good manner, so. Thank you very much.
You're good, Steve. Thank you. And the last proclamation has to do with Preservation Month. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for sustainable growth and economic development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining unique community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history and of our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of our heritage that have shaped us as a people and has resulted in downtown Beatrice and other areas of our communities to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas this place matters, shall be the theme within Preservation Month 2017 in Beatrice, co-sponsored by Main Street Beatrice, Gage County Heritage Preservation, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And whereas historic preservation is done to save our heritage for our children, in Beatrice they are encouraged to participate during the month of May by drawing the Beatrice building they think is historic. And whereas Main Street Beatrice is celebrating National Preservation Month with the annual Mother's Day Landmark Tour to be held Sunday, May 14th, beginning at 2:00 PM at the Carnegie Building located at 218 North 5th Street in Beatrice. Now therefore, I stand worth, mayor of the city of Beatrice, to proclaim May 2017 as National Preservation Month, and call upon the people of Beatrice to stake their claim and join their fellow citizens across the United States in taking action, recognizing, and participating in this special observance. Witness my hand and official seal, city of Beatrice, this first day of May 2017. And accepting this is Lorraine Ridesal, our Beatrice librarian. Forty years, Beatrice librarian.
I brought the coloring sheet so you two can draw one of those historic buildings.
We get crayons, too?
I'm actually here on behalf of Michael Suthen, the director of Main Street Beatrice. I'm the chair of the Design Committee, which is the one that works on the history of downtown and also its appearance, including preservation. And as the secretary of Gage County Heritage Preservation, a group that's nearing its 30th anniversary in the community. And those two groups for years have gone together and done the Mother's Day tour, and I want to thank you for your support and mention something about what makes that tour special. Every year, we try to focus on some aspect of preservation in the community that needs to be highlighted. And because we've had such a focus on the National Register, we have been attempting to have tours that relate to the buildings that were already on the National Register before the entire downtown became part of that. One of the things that makes this tour unique is that it is not just a tour walking by or driving by, but in this case, most of the time, the people who have these buildings are willing to open them to us. So this is a tour where you actually get to go inside the building. And as has been mentioned, this year we're going to begin at the Carnegie Building, and we're not only considering it, but we're going to feature Charles Park and how those two landmark sites in our community interact with each other and why the existence of the Carnegie Building and the schools in that area actually helped create Charles Park. So if you're curious about all of that, this is the day you might want to hear about it. And I'm proud to announce that thanks to some arrangements made this afternoon, the Episcopal Church, which is another one of our downtown area landmarks, will be open that afternoon. And if you've never seen that church, that is just a gem. The last place is still going to be a surprise. We'll be announcing soon. Be honest, they didn't get back to me, and I am hesitant to just announce that we're showing up on Sunday without their permission. But I do encourage you. Over the years, we have done different buildings in the downtown area, and we started this actually working with the churches. One of the goals of Main Street is to have something be a benefit to every one of the people in the district. And we started out with churches because many people don't see each other's churches, and they were willing to have them open on a Sunday afternoon and have people there to talk about them. So that's how this tour began, and then we had requests for other buildings, and we tried to accommodate that when we can. So we've often had buildings in the stage before they were developed, and then again afterwards. We've had people come from as far away as Kansas City and Omaha for this, thanks to the publicity that's received. And I will admit, yes, many times, they are former residents who wanted to come back again to see a favorite building or to see a building they never were able to be inside because it was closed at the time they lived here. So again, thank you for your support of this particular project. We're really pleased to have that, even if it's a little bit of tourism, just for a Sunday afternoon, to have people come and see what we have in this building, because in this community, because we do have many beautiful buildings. Thank you again.
Thanks, Lorraine. Appreciate it. All right, we will now continue with our regular agenda, starting with Item 2, the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilman or citizen so requests. First item on the agenda is Item A, Approve Agenda As Submitted. Item B, Receive and Place On File All Notices Pertaining To This Meeting. Item C, Receive and Place On File All Materials Having Any Bearing On This Meeting. Item D, Approval Of Minutes Of Regular Meeting On April 17th, 2017, As On File In The City Clerk's Office. Item E, Approval Of Minutes Of Work Session Meeting On April 24th, 2017, As On File In The City Clerk's Office. Item F, Approval Of Treasurer's Report Of Claims In The Amount Of $433,688.46. Item G, Approval Of Boswa Report Of Claims In The Amount Of $75,924.21. Item H, Approval Of Special Designated License Application Of D. And J. Enterprises, LLC, Doing Business As Cabo Bar For Beer Garden And Dance On July 22nd, 2017, From 4:00 PM Until 2:00 AM, August 19th, 2017, And From 2:30 PM Until 2:00 AM, On September 9th, 2017, From 4:00 PM Until 2:00 PM, At 115 South 5th Street, And Permission To Use The City-Owned Alley For Said Beer Garden. Item I, Award A Bid For The Hendrix Edition Sanitary Sewer Extension Project, 2017, To K-2 Construction In The Amount Of $57,560, As Recommended By The Board Of Public Works. Item J, Award Bid For The Second Street, Court To Scott Street Water Main Improvement Project, 2017 Project To TH Construction Company In The Amount Of $23,354.97, As Recommended By The Board Of Public Works. Item K, Award A Bid For The Industrial Park Roadway Improvements To RL Team And Construction, Inc. In The Amount Of $348,218.40, As Recommended By The Board Of Public Works. Item L, Award Of Bid For The City Auditorium Restoration Project To Masonary Construction, Inc. In The Amount Of $131,198. Item M, Approval Of Change Order Number One, An Increase In The Amount Of $25,313, To Masonary Construction, Inc. For The City Auditorium Restoration Project. Item N, Refer Claim Of Russell Mann Under The Nebraska Political Subdivision Tort Claims Act To The City Attorney And The City Insurance Carrier For Review And Disposition. Item O, Resolution Number 6047, Identifying Tobias Templemeier As The CDBG Administrator And Designated Employee For The Day-to-Day Responsibilities Of Various Open CDBG Grants. Item P, Resolution Number 6048, Appointing Tobias Templemeier As Interim City Attorney. Item Q, Resolution Number 6049, Executing Agreement Number Two With The Firefighters Union Local Number 1098, Relating To Paramedic Pay. Item R, Resolution Number 6050, Executing The Memorandum Of Understanding With The Firefighters Union Local Number 1098, To Provide For Paramedic Pay Which Is Competitive In The Regional Area. Item S, Resolution Number 6051, Entering Into A Farm Lease Amendment Between The City Of Beatrice And Justin M. Wiegand For Farming Purposes On Real Estate Known As Gage County FSA Farm Number 9045, Track 7680. Item T, Resolution Number 6052, Executing The Agreement Between The City Of Beatrice And The Nebraska Department Of Roads Regarding Improvements To Highway 136, As Recommended By The Board Of Public Works. And finally, Item U, Resolution Number 6053, Executing The Agreement Between The City Of Beatrice And The Nebraska Department Of Roads Regarding Modifying Traffic Signals And Replacing A Traffic Controller At The Intersection Of Highway 77 And Dorsey Street, As Recommended By The Board Of Public Works. Is there any item any council member wants removed from the agenda? Gentlemen? Ted?
R, as in Robert.
R. And Dwight?
H, please.
H. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the Consent Agenda, with the exceptions of Items H and R, be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Borg, and that all items under the Consent Agenda be approved, except and or ratified as presented. Your vote, please. That is approved, 8-0. Refer back to Item H. Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that the purview of a special designated license application of D. And J. Enterprises, LLC, Doing Business As Cabo Bar For Beer Garden And Dance On July 22nd, 2017, From 4:00 PM Until 2:00 AM, August 19th, 2017, From 2:30 PM Until 2:00 AM, And September 9th, 2017, From 4:00 PM Until 2:00 AM, At 115 South 5th Street, And Permission To Use The City-Owned Alley For Said Beer Garden Be Accepted, Approved, And/or Ratified As Presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, to accept the application of Cabo Bar. Discussion.
I pulled it off, as I have in the past. I don't think that we need to be having city property used as beer gardens. It's not our fault they didn't buy a place that's big enough to support themselves. I think it probably puts us in more liability than usual in the alley beside a bar. I think it's wrong to use city streets, alleys, or anything else for beer gardens.
Okay. Another discussion?
Stand up, dude. Are these times longer? I know Jeff's here, but I'm not voting against it. I'm just curious. I think in years past, I think that the time that we're giving the permit for seems to grow in length every year.
Let's come on up, Jeff, just for a second, and just identify yourself just for the record, please.
Jeff Schu. The times, I don't think are any longer. The one for the 19th may be longer because that's when the whole street's going to be blocked off for the Blue River Jam. So I had to wait to find out that the Blue River Jam was going to be allowed, permission to use the whole street before I applied for this application here. I think that's the only longer time is just to work with the Blue River Jam.
Yeah, it was more curiosity, and you were here, and so I'm still not going to vote against it, but I was just wondering.
And that's the eclipse weekend, so we have no idea how many people will be in town. I don't think anybody does. So we're going to try to do everything we can to put on a show.
More than one?
Appreciate that.
What's that?
More than one.
Any other comments? Discussion? Anyone from the public? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is approved, 7-1, with Councilman Partey voting against. And the other item was R.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 6050, Executing The Memorandum Of Understanding With The Firefighters Union Local Number 1098, To Provide For Paramedic Pay Which Is Competitive In The Regional Area. B, Approved, Accepted, And Or Ratified As Presented.
By Catlin, seconded by Kerr, or Claybaum, that the Memorandum Of Understanding Regarding Resolution Number 6050 be approved. Discussion. Ted?
I asked to have it pulled off. I'm simply not ready to vote on this. I don't, I'm, maybe I've missed something. Maybe the remainder of the council has more information on it than I do, but we had a we had a group of firefighters here come to us, an executive session, make a pitch for higher pay, and that was the last I heard of it. And it's in the packet on the Consent Agenda with no information about cities that we've compared it to, why this is, there's just not enough information for me to vote on this. It could be the very best thing, but the discussion isn't exactly, hasn't been exactly transparent. I don't think the people in the community know it. I certainly don't know. So if I've missed something, fill me in. If not, I'm going to vote against it because I don't have enough information to vote for it.
Did you send Tobias, Tobias, did you send out information in advance?
I would have to go back and look through my emails. I don't think there's anything particular that I sent out. No.
Other comments? Bob?
Yeah, I disagree with you. I mean, I remember when they were here, and the conversation was we need to look at it, which I truly believe we do need to from a, you know, from a market standpoint. I mean, I'm almost, I agree with you. I don't know if I'm going to vote no, but on the other side of the coin, I think we didn't get the information we really needed to move forward.
Well, I, like I said, I don't want to vote no for it, against it either. It could be, but I'm not ready to vote for it, so I'm going to vote against it. Hopefully, we'll bring it back, put it on another, could we just table it for two weeks?
Well, we can, you can do anything you want, but if you voted, that's not, you can make any motion you want, Phil. I'm just voting against it as it stands.
Would you rather see it tabled for two weeks and we put it in the form of resolution?
The only thing I would note is that Item Q was the amendment to the current contract. Item R is a memorandum of understanding which deals with the non-binding resolution- Item R is a memorandum of understanding which deals with the non-binding resolution to look to increase their pay after the current contract has expired.
So if we're going to table something, we have to table resolution six-zero-four-nine.
Which we've already voted on.
Which we have approved, haven't we?
So the only resolution left right now is a non-binding memorandum of understanding regarding possible future increases for the next contractual, union contract.
Got you.
Yeah, and I apologize. I should have pulled them both off, and I didn't.
Rich?
But I'm still not voting for R.
Does this bring us in line with the other communities, and where are we sitting pay-wise in our array?
In our array is a different subject. What we looked at was what Lincoln's doing. How do we get closer to Lincoln? We know, meeting with the firefighters, they know they can never get Lincoln wages. They know that's not a possibility. But how do we start to close that gap? So we sat down and started looking at a way to get closer to Lincoln, find a pay range that, quite frankly, we could look to keep our current guys here, look to recruit new people to come to the community, and give some incentive for our current EMTs become paramedics. And while doing that, we came up with this wage step as we kind of walked through things. We also wanted to make sure it worked with the current budget, in addition to finding a way to kind of close that gap and get closer to what Lincoln and other municipalities pay in this area.
And you're talking three-twenty-five an hour as of October first of eighteen. What are they drawing now?
Right, and I think they're currently, I got that right here, they're at a dollar seventy-eight today.
A dollar seventy-eight more to be a paramedic?
Any further discussion from anybody? Yes, sir.
I think the circumstances that we've been going through in the last possibly six, eight months, I think, time-wise, I think it's kind of, I'd like to see us proceed, because with the outside pressure that is kind of put on the city with the other opportunities that are out there for our guys, I think we need to, we've got the crews that we have on hand, I think we need to keep them intact, and I realize that there are increases, but for the service that they're providing for us, I believe we're getting top-notch performance out of them. And I would like to see us, you know, proceed, because sometimes when the feather long that we wait, we run that possibility of losing more people, and I would hate to see us any more than what we've already lost.
Mr. Kerr?
Just going to expand on P's just a little bit. How many have we lost after they get their EMT has gone away, going to a bigger department or such for more money? You got any idea?
When you're, are you talking in the last sixty days or the last six years? We've lost a couple of them recently, and I say two, within the last three months you've lost. I know we have at least another three or four that are currently have applications into Lincoln to look to go there.
So we train them, and then they head off and get more money, basically.
That's been an issue for us, yes.
Bob?
You know, I actually, quite honestly, to Tobias some time, I'm glad Q didn't get pulled off, because that gives them their raise now, which takes care of the timing issue. For me, again, it was just not really knowing what that conversation is and how it compares, and where do we stand, because I think it is an important issue that we want to make sure, because they do a great job, and we want to continue to do a great job for Beatrice and Gage County. I just think there's a lack of information here.
Totally noted. Anybody else?
Still, I'm not arguing their competency, they do their work. And to answer part of Rich's question, we're not comparing any communities in our array, because there's nobody in our array that has these guys. We're the only ones. So we're doing this in the middle of the contract. I'm just, I'm not, I don't have enough information. I'm not going to vote for it.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved, that is approved, six, I'm sorry, five to three, is that right?
Yes.
Am I reading that right? And Councilman Morgan, Partey, and Fairbanks vote no. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is item three, a public hearing, a public hearing to receive the annual, semi-annual report of the Citizens Advisory Review Committee, as provided, sorry, provided by the Local Option Municipal Economic Development Act, R.R.S. nineteen forty-three. And with us is Grant Jones, who is going to submit the report. Grant?
Good evening. It's my privilege to be here tonight, Councilman Cook. All right. I've got a quick report here for you. I won't take up a lot of time. Currently, your L.B. Eight Forty funds stand at four hundred seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine dollars, but later on your agenda tonight, you're going to vote to disperse about a hundred thousand of that to Hendrix Edition out there. So that would, if it should pass, it'll lower your L.B. Eight Forty funds to three hundred seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine dollars. Your CDBG, our community development block grant money, currently sits at a hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred and six dollars. I believe there are components to the Hendrix project that involve that fund as well. Should that go through and get used, the state's going to come over top for some more help on that particular work, but note that your CDBG funds will most likely not be replenished. They'll probably be gone, because the state's no longer really endorsing that project. As it stands today, our loans are moving along that are out there right now. We have a couple of them that Tobias's office has to deal with every now and again, but by and large, we're doing a pretty good job on the outstanding monies, and a lot of good projects that have come along, too, and we're happy about them. Last meeting we had, there was a seventy thousand dollar award for a housing project to demolish some area that won't be before you, because they didn't get their NIFA funding. So in round one, they'll have to go back to the second round and see if they can apply for it then, and should they do that, it'll come forward to the city council at that time. Do you have any questions?
Grant, what do you say we had left in our L.B. Eight Forty?
L.B. Eight Forty, right now, four hundred seventy-eight thousand.
Thank you.
Ted?
So the fund that is essentially going away, did your group have any conversations about trying to keep something in the bottom of that so it stays alive in case, in the future, there's a different take on that at the state level, that that might come back, and we wouldn't have to reapply for it? Did you have any of that conversation?
Some conversations were had, but they weren't along those lines. It actually involved executive director from Engage, Walker Zokowski, was there, and he discussed another state fund that had been coming about, and that is a new direction that they're kind of going at the economic development level. In meetings past, Tobias had informed us, and we've known about it for a long time, that CDBG money just wasn't something economic development wanted to do, and we're probably lucky we had it this long. I think they tried to gobble it up from us a few years ago, if I remember correct, and they kept us pretty well protected, so.
Yeah, you can see my point.
Yep, I do.
I guess that's something I'd pass along to you, if you could ask Walker if he thinks that.
You bet.
Alter, I don't remember the name of the...
Redleg?
Red, I was thinking Redline, but it was Red, yep.
Redleg. Never heard of it. It's a pot of money that's out there. You have to run it through basically a utility company. You have to then load it out to a qualifying business. When they repay the money back, it essentially defederalizes the money. Strings are no longer attached, and then you can loan it out as you deem fit after that.
So we did discuss with Walker some projects that might qualify for that type of fund to get the money out and then back in for reuse down the road, and we're all kind of keeping our eye on that, things that we can do between economic development and our group.
So the municipality gets to reloan it?
Yeah, it's actually, the Board of Public Works is qualified. They would be the ones who would get the first round of money. They then loan it to a qualifying business. It gets paid back, I believe it would probably pay it back to the city once it comes back in, and then the city would have those funds available to reloan back out.
Okay.
The example we discussed is, let's say, a hospital wants to expand a whatever wing. Well, we would encourage them to apply. They borrow the money, pay it back, and then it can come through back through another reuse fund of some kind.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the public? Entertained a motion, Mr. Catlin, to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at seven-thirty-nine P.M.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the public hearing be closed at seven-thirty-nine P.M. Your vote, please. That is approved eight-zero. Grant, thank you very much. Next item is item B, public hearing to amend Article Thirteen of the zoning ordinance of the city of Beatrice, Ordinance Number Forty-nine dash thirteen, regarding administration and procedures. Templemeier?
Oh, Mr. Butcher.
Oh, Mr. Butcher?
All right.
Is this your last official duty?
There's more on here.
Oh, okay.
As you can tell. Pursuant to our comprehensive review throughout the building inspections department, myself and engineering, we've slowly gone through and tried to update the zoning books in regards to areas we've had the most complications in, areas where we've identified problems or inconsistencies with our procedure versus what may have been written, and tried to get all those things in line. And so as we noted previously, we updated Article Ten, which related to signs, and now we are moving on to Article Thirteen, which relates to administration and procedures. Essentially, what we have here for you, there's a lot of updates in here where we're just clarifying dates, deadlines, times, noting calendar days for everything, if we're relating to calendar day to days, business days. Clarifying like who reviews a site plan, making sure those site plans are reviewed by both engineering and the building inspector, because they have two zones of interest that they're concerned about in the approval process. We have language in there that notes we're going to start notifying via mail adjacent property owners near special uses and rezonings and things like that. We ran into situations in the past where we knew we were going to rezone a property, we had an application to rezone, and then when we put the sign out on the property, we understood that it was all the people on the backside that were never going to drive in front of this property, that were going to be very concerned about that. And so that's when we implemented the idea and recommended it here to start notifying adjacent property owners. So that's noted throughout. Cleaned up some of the things in regards to what we do. It talked a lot about building permits. We eliminated a lot of that language. Building permits is controlled by the International Building Code, the Residential Code, and city code, not specifically the zoning ordinance, so we wanted to make sure that we removed that item. The last one is we just made sure that the, kind of the language that we use for what previously was called administrative variances, we refer to it as administrative setback adjustment, and that's the ability to go in and make up to a five-foot adjustment on a setback without having to go through a formal process, other than review by city administration. Those are kind of the highlights of what we found. Again, lots of clerical errors, just to get all the numbers and everything in the form and format that we are going to try and use throughout all of our changes to the zoning book. But I can answer any of your questions.
I think it's really a good step in the right direction. This is needed to have some review and modifications for a long, long time, so I applaud your efforts in the planning and zoning commission for doing this. Any comments from anybody from the public? Close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at seven forty-two P.M.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the public hearing be closed at seven forty-two P.M. Your vote, please. That is approved eight-zero. Next item is item resolution number six-zero-five-four, executing a loan agreement, promissory note, deed of trust, and related documents between the city of Beatrice and Hybrid Turkey's LLC for economic development loans totaling one hundred thousand dollars from L.B. Eight Forty Funds.
Mayor, I move that resolution number six-zero-five-four be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, resolution number six-zero-five-four be passed and adopted. Discussion.
The main importance of this L.B. Eight Forty loan to Hybrid Turkey's LLC is a hundred thousand dollars. It is completely forgivable if they continue to operate a business in, or a hatchery in Beatrice for a ten-year period. You'll see that ten percent gets forgiven every year throughout the course of that time. Outside of that, I don't know what else you would want to know. I will note that they did purchase the lots in the industrial park from the city for sixty thousand dollars. On the turnaround, they got an L.B. Eight Forty loan for a hundred and sixty, or, excuse me, a hundred thousand dollars. So in addition, they're also paying to put all the utilities in out to that site through Tiff Financing, the street, the water, sanitary sewer, which you approved, electrical, those are being paid through Tiff Financing for them.
Questions? Comments? Anyone from the public? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved eight-zero. Resolution number six-zero-five-four has been approved. Next item is an ordinance, ordinance vacating lots five, six, seven, eight, nine, sixteen and seventeen, Wildwood Estates addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I move that the said ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero nine. The title therefore be approved. The rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that the ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero zero nine. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, and ordinance be read by three times only tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved eight-zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero zero nine by number the first time, ordinance number seventeen dash zero zero nine by number the second time, and ordinance number seventeen dash zero zero nine by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number seventeen dash zero zero nine be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance number seventeen dash zero zero nine be passed and approved. Discussion.
This ordinance comes before you on the request of the developers of Wildwood. You'll see on page one fifty-nine of your packet, essentially what they're doing is replating some of the lots on the interior of their development. Those lots were originally designed a number of years ago. They wish to remove those current existing lot lines and redraw them. So the first part tonight is the vacation of the existing plat, and then the next ordinance coming up is replating those five lots in the middle of their development.
The public? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved eight-zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero zero nine has been approved. Next item is an ordinance approving the plat of Wildwood Estates, second addition, city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero ten. The title therefore be approved. The rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that the ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero one zero. Title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved eight-zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero one zero by number the first time, ordinance number seventeen dash zero one zero the second time, and ordinance number seventeen dash zero one zero the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number seventeen dash zero one zero be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance number seventeen dash zero one zero be passed and approved. Discussion. Any further discussion from anyone? Public, your vote, please. And that is approved eight-zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero one zero has been adopted. Next is ordinance amending Article Thirteen of the zoning ordinance regarding administration and procedures.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero one one. The title therefore be approved. The rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that the ordinance be given number seventeen dash zero one one. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved eight-zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero one one by number only the first time, ordinance number seventeen dash zero one one by number the second time, and ordinance number seventeen dash zero one one by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that the ordinance number seventeen dash zero one be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that ordinance number seventeen dash zero one one be passed and approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved eight-zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero one one has been passed and approved. Next item on the agenda is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anything for the public forum? Anybody from the public? I guess I would like to say that I certainly want to express my thanks and gratitude to city... City Attorney Greg Butcher, who is now going to embark on a new endeavor in Seward as their city administrator. Really appreciate everything that you have done for the city and our relationship and the relationship with the community and the city council, and for that, I thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right.
I told my aunt you're coming.
Next item on the agenda is discussion, approval of the Beatrice Plus funding request for St. Joe's Catholic School in the amount of $1,000 for installation of an ADA compliant concrete path into the playground.
Mayor, I move the approval of the Beatrice Plus funding request from St. Joe's Catholic School in the amount of $1,000 for the installation of an ADA compliant concrete path into playground be approved, accepted, ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billzbach, approval of the Beatrice Plus funding request to St. Joe's in the amount of $1,000. Further discussion? Dwight?
I just want to say I'm voting against this because we're doing this to a location that's only accessible through certain periods of the day. It's off limits the rest of the time during some of the prime time hours. I don't think cities should be supporting something that you can't get to for free.
Okay. Any other comments?
I brought it back because we were worried about setting precedents. Our last time we had this here, and it was brought to our attention afterwards that we had already approved it for St. Paul's for 2,500 last year. So that's why I thought we should bring this back and take a look at it again.
Okay. Rich?
Years ago, when we started this up, we put a playground out there at the mall. That's not open 24 hours a day to public, to public access, and I just, I just can't understand why. Toby, do we have any restrictions? When we set this up, we said that any organization could apply for these funds. Is that correct?
Beatrice Plus funds simply become more or less general fund dollars, so they have to be spent on things that the city can spend these types of dollars on. So the organization itself doesn't necessarily matter to the use of it that makes more important than-
So do we have, do we have any kind of standards set to get this money, or?
I mean, we just have our, I mean, we know what it takes to qualify. It's case by case. We look at each application as it comes in, make sure it's something that the city could in fact fund. The organization itself doesn't particularly matter.
And from what I understand, they've spent a lot of money on that playground equipment up there, tons, somewhere in the effect of 70, $80,000. And to be quite honest with you, those little kids up there around that area do not have a public playground within walking distance of, around that, that area. And granted, it's just during the, while schools in, in session, and I believe in the afternoons when they're out of session, it'll be open. All during the summer, it'll be open, on the weekends and such, it'll be open to these kids. And I, I just, I just don't understand why, I mean, we spend $1,000, you know, on, on a lot of stuff, and I just can't understand why $1,000 would have such a problem here. I'm going to vote for it. I think it's an addition, a good addition to the community.
Any other comments? From anyone? Anybody from the public? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is approved six to two with Party and Fairbanks voting no.
You're not going to get a set by me anymore.
Next item on the agenda is, has to do with 407 Court. We did receive a bid from Lincoln Custom Masonry for repairs on the east side of the building.
Mayor, I move to accept the bid received from Lincoln Custom Masonry for repairs on the east side of the building be accepted, approved, or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, to accept the bid received from Lincoln Custom Masonry for repairs on the east side of the building. Which of you gentlemen want to take that?
I'll take this one. This may be my final act of duty.
It was not ours.
Yeah. As we were finishing up the work at 407 Court, once team and construction completed their demolition in full of the building, brought it all the way down, cleared the debris, and as they began to place in the concrete pads for runoff, that's when we had Lincoln Custom Masonry come down and take a look at any of the elements that were left over on the side of both. We have an evaluation for 405 Court, we have an evaluation for 409 Court as well. But in regards to 405 Court, significant number of rafters, joists, connections were there also. The chimney, that was the chimney for 407 Court, was abutting and connected to 405 Court, which would be the Black Crow building. And so once we had them, that exposed and removed, and we could get a full assessment of it, including an area that was at ground level that impeded the ability of team and construction to put in the concrete pads, we had Lincoln Custom Masonry give us an estimate to fill those exposed holes, tuck point the chimney area, and do it at the exact same time that they'll be completing work for the Black Crow, which will be the top, final top three feet of tuck pointing, and then they'll redo the entire corner of the northeast corner of the Black Crow building. They're doing that work already and scheduled to come in, and we thought with them coming in, the cheapest price we're going to get for masonry work is to have them do it at the same time and save on those transportation costs and lifts and things like that.
Ted?
So, just so I'm clear, this is a bid for work, or is this, if we vote for this, you're paying these people to do this work?
We will, we will pay them to do the work pending the amount of bricks they need. I mean, they'll just order bricks, and as many as they fill in is what their total count will be. I mean, that's an estimate. They can never know exactly how many number of bricks without going up there and measuring all those holes.
And, and just so I'm clear, this isn't part of the original scope of work. This is what we added on when we dug up the foundation and we added that?
This is the exposed elements that we found. As King Little, our structural engineer, put it, this is the unknowns. And so this is, this is the last one, once we exposed it, found out what level those rafter holes were in, and some of the brick came out of the wall down by where team and's work was being conducted. And then obviously the chimney, we didn't realize the chimney would be exposed to the wall of 405.
I actually stopped to look at it from what, my limited, looks like when they built 405, apparently still was there. When they built 407, and they built the chimney, they simply made three wa, three sides of the chimney and used the back wall of the adjacent buildings, the back of the chimney. So that's what it looked like to me.
And so the mortar, as you could see, you go right up to it and look at it, the mortar's completely gone.
And I, yeah, and I get it. And I understand why you feel that we're on the hook for this. I didn't vote for the work on the foundation. I thought that was beyond what we should have been doing, and I'm not going to vote for this. So I just wanted to clarify it. Thanks.
Dwight?
I've got a couple things. It says 407 on here. That should be reworded to 405.
It's in relation to the 407 Court project. Obviously, yes, the work is going to be done on 405 Court.
And Evan was, we gave her a small bundle of cash a while back, and she was going to hire Lincoln Masonry. Have we seen documents that she's used all that money?
Yes, she's used approximately 23,000 of that. She's withholding the last bit, plus whatever overages she has, until this last little bit of work on the corner of the building and all the eastern edge of tuck pointing is done. And they knew they wouldn't be able to access the building until team and construction had completed their work. And so she's withholding the rest of her payments for the full payment of what she owes them until the work is completed. They're going to come down and do the work, and so we asked them to give us an estimate when they came down to do that work, what, what other work we could get finished up.
Anybody else? Rich?
Well, I voted no from the very beginning on this whole entire thing. I like, anyway, it's going to be a no vote for me. I think Kate should take care of this.
Anybody else? Anyone from the public? Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is five three, and it's been approved with Kerr, Party, and Fairbanks voting no. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is a recap of the citywide cleanup. Jason, you want to come on up? Jason Moore, our street superintendent?
You're going to be, she's going to be back. You know good enough she is.
No, this is yours.
You'll never hear of it again. 20 years worth.
Jason, how did it go?
I, this year it went, it went fairly well. I believe I made up some packets, for about five packets for you guys to pass around. Each packet is the same. Kind of what we did was, I had my loader operators, when we were going through town, every stop or residential stop that we had, I had the crews take a picture of the items to show what we were leaving, or to show residents that may not have registered, so that we had proof of if we ever had to go back and show why we weren't picking these items up. So what you see here is, I believe we had 951 residences that we picked up. We had roughly 210 residents that we did not pick up the items. What you see is roughly, I'm going to guess about 40 or so maybe, that I picked of the worst of the 210. So we had roughly, roughly 1,000 locations we picked up. About 20% of the locations had items in it that we did not pick up. If you look through some of the pictures, you may see, you may see pictures of items in there that we would have picked up, a certain item, if you may see a recliner or a couch off to the side, we would pick up the item. You'll see a lot of small items, garden hoses, boxes of items, garbage bags, tires, lumber. Lumber was a big one that we had this year, a lot of lumber, a lot of remodeling type laugh and whatnots, if you will. I think this year, again, if you look at some of the pictures, you may say, why didn't they pick this up? Some of the pictures will have items in there. Some of the bigger item, the pictures that you may see may be an address that was not registered. So in there. I believe this year, we looked at going back to just large item pickup, and, and that's what we tried to really stress through the media, as well as with social media, as well as in our billings, that we were going to do just large item pickups. In the past, it was, it was kind of a touchy area because we said no boxes and no bags, but we had large items, but yet there was stuff that was piled up there. If you see in some of the pictures, there's a lot of loose items that would be piled up around. In years past, we would pick that up because it may not have been a large item, but it also didn't meet the criteria that we wouldn't pick up. So going to this year, you can see the residences that we had were 951 residents. That was the lowest amount of residents that we had had since 2000. Not only did we reduce that, but we also reduced our man-hours. It was the lowest amount of total man-hours that we had received with 261 man-hours. The last year that we had less was 1997. So, and, and the next load, the number that really jumps out at me is we had 75 dump truck loads that went out to the landfill, and that's the lowest amount of truckloads that we've had going back to, all the way back to 1993. So I think the information that we got out to the residents about large item pickup, I think it worked. I think it also helped that I was, was able to sit down and, and look at the city map that we had of the sections of town that we would pick up. I looked at the areas and moved them around so that the areas of town may have been larger, that we would pick up on certain days, as before we had five days. This year, we moved everything down to three days. The areas were larger, but they, they matched up with where curbside pickup would be the next day. So if we left an item, small items that you see, most generally, the next day would be curbside pickup for that area, and, and garbage company, Beatrice Sanitary came through and did pretty decent about picking up most everything that we left. So I think moving it to 10-hour days really helped out. Most of the days, my crew were coming in at between 4:00 and 4:30, so us going home at 5:00, it wasn't a big stretch for us. We were staying busy through the entire day. We did use Thursday, our, our last day that week, we went back and had any items that, hey, we, we swear we, you know, you missed us, one of those types of items. So I think if you look at the numbers that we have, the amount of man-hours, the amount of miles, hours on the equipment, you know, I, I think what we did this year worked out fairly well.
Just to clarify, mattress pickup, you had some 300 mattresses that were dropped off at the drop-off point?
Had to be between 280 and 300 mattresses that were dropped off. We had two 30-yard roll-offs on Monday, we had three 30-yard roll-offs on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then we had about 10 or so that got dumped down there, even though Clean City was done, they got dumped in the parking lot down at the ballfields Thursday. So every morning that we would show up, because we would leave the roll-off there until about 9:00 at night, and then I had landfill operators come in, pick up the roll-off, take it back and dump it, we would bring a roll-off back down the next morning at about 8:30, and somewhere between 9:00 at night, 8:30 the next morning, we had, we'd have 30 to 35 mattresses laying on the ground. So overnight hours, there were a lot of people bringing mattresses in.
Joe?
Jason, just for clarification, I had people ask me why you guys wouldn't take like pallets or lumber or drywall. What is the reason?
We've never taken construction debris.
But I just want to know why.
I guess we would have to go back and look at the regular, the rules. It's, we've had no on the, I know on the, it's been one of the deals that we've never taken, and, and so.
You know, a couple of these pictures shows, you know, there's a telephone pole laying here.
Yeah, exactly.
There, there's some things here that I can understand, and wood was definitely one of the items that was forbidden.
Yeah, I just didn't know why. I had people ask me.
Dwight?
There was a lot of swapping going on too. I see a lot of people collecting things, and maybe that's a good time to put your telephone pole out, because maybe somebody goes, I, I need one of those. I think social media, Facebook, I read that not very much, but there was a lot of conversation on there about, I will do this for you, or I, you know, and do this, and all kinds of directions on what we're not supposed to have, and they listed that, I don't know how many times throughout the-
And I think the concern was, is that, that we may lose it if we don't follow the rules, and so I think that, that was good.
I do too.
Bob?
I think, you know, Jason, you have a great move, the way you reorganized it so sanitation garbage went the next day. I know in our neighborhood and things, I think that worked, I think that was, that was a brilliant move. I think, I think it worked really well. I'd like to see it continue next year. The other thing that I was thinking about is, I thought about it, like especially for the wood and the drywall and those type of things, just personally, I'd like to see an amnesty, amnesty day in late October, where a Saturday you have from 8:00 to mid, 8:00 to noon, you have the opportunity, because there are a lot of items in these pictures that you certainly shouldn't pick up, but it might encourage people to figure out how to put them in a pickup or a car, and it might be just catalyst that gets them to the dump. So I would like to see the amnesty day really be considered for, you know, what is it, the second Saturday, or the last Saturday, or time it with the clock change, and just give an amnesty day, or, you know, half-day, 8:00 to noon, and that way, it gives everybody another shot to get some of the stuff to the dump. So I'd just like to see that addition, where you have that amnesty day in October, and then you turn around and you have the cleanup day in April, and maybe that really help our town move forward on keeping Beatrice beautiful.
Well, and that's, and that's the one thing that we would have to look at there is because that, that construction debris, as long as it's clean and doesn't have paper items in it, it can go to our C and D site. The only, the only concern that I would have with giving a, a amnesty day for construction debris is that it would be taken advantage of by the contractors. And, and you would see contractors who would, who would stockpile their construction debris, and, and you would, you would see it, and we would get trailer loads, and I mean, you would have to set a limit on it, because we would have, we have contractors who would bring it in by the truckloads.
Same thing with your tires.
Ted?
So part of the answer to part of the Joe's thing and why we didn't take construction thing, so a number of years ago, when we went to citywide pickup, before I was here when we, when you didn't have mandatory citywide pickup for your garbage, we had some people that simply didn't take the trash service, and they, in the morning, they'd just take their trash over, set it in front of their neighbors who did take it. We had, I had a couple of people that, when it went citywide, say, oh, thank goodness, because my neighbor keeps all of his garbage in his garage until the citywide pickup, and takes it out to the curb once a year. So that was part of the discussion about the construction material about this, when we, it was at the same time, Joe. We wanted to limit that because of just what Jason just said, but what Bob did. We, we'd have, not necessarily contractors, I'm not going to throw them under the bus with the thing, but we'd have people that did their own remodeling or whatever, and they would store that stuff up and simply drag it to the curb on that day. So that's why- So, that's why we've, that's why when we had this, we eliminated it from that. Just so, just so you know.
Rick?
I'm just glad that we went the right direction and kind of turned the tide of where it had been going. So, I hope that with further education, that will eliminate a lot of these pictures that we have in here, and that things get easier for you. Another amnesty day would be great if we-
Yeah. The only, the only thing that I would, that I, the only piece of information that, that I think that we're missing, I, I would like to have known from, like, the sheriff's office, if they had illegal dumping piqued in the days or weeks, you know, a few days after this, and somebody said, oh, I didn't get it, and they just threw it in the pickup and took it out in the country and dumped it. I wondered if, if we, if we shifted our problem someplace else. And, you know, that's, that's on me. I could have called Gus.
Two.
Did you have?
We had somebody back up and dumped their couches over the fence at the landfill.
Sweet.
Yeah.
That's some energy.
Yeah. And, and, and so, and they picked the one gate that didn't have the, didn't have the cameras on it. So, and, and the other one was a couple hundred yards north of 19th and Dorsey, and they threw a couple of mattresses in the ditch, which seems curious, because they already had it loaded up. They could have taken it to the drop-off, but instead, they threw it in the country, which, it was just mattresses. So, we picked that up. But, and, and honestly, you know, I, I haven't heard of anything. Usually, at the landfill, if we have the townships, usually, they're pretty good about if there's a, if there was an illegal dump site within a few, or I want to say even six, eight miles of the landfill. If somebody gives us a call, and says, hey, we had a dump site show up, or the county would, I didn't hear anything from the townships.
Okay.
Do we write any, any tickets for anybody after this? Do we know? Any tickets written?
Tickets, no, because the first thing we do is we go through and give everybody their issue, their notice. They've got five days to come and clean it up. If it's not cleaned up, then we go out and clean up their properties. But actual criminal citations, if that's what you're asking, no.
Are you a little disappointed?
I am. It was one bad thing.
It was a fair number of them. It wasn't a huge number. We had to go back and clean up.
Answer your questions, guys? Okay. Mr. Catlin?
I did have some, you know, farmers in the area stop in and visit with me on it, and they, they were very thankful that we continued the program, because they really feel that it does make a difference out in their area. And, you know, they were just thankful that we did it. And I, I think we, I, I don't think it increased any problems out there that I've heard.
We had one illegal dump site, a township gentleman came in a week or so, maybe two weeks before Clean City. But we, we went out, landfill operators, we actually went out and picked it up, so, and brought that one in. But that was, I think that was just something that just showed up. Somebody rolled out a recliner in the, you know, in the ditch.
Yeah, people are going to do that. Yeah.
All right. Jason, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.